I call the February 21st, 2023 Board Meeting Open. I'd like to welcome everybody out today. Thank you for coming and hopefully you gained a lot of information from this board meeting. Imocation today will be Commissioner Joe Daughtry.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon each of us. Lord, we thank you for our salvation. Today, Lord, we ask for your guidance as we tackle some important issues that Wayne County has before us. Lord, we seek and lean on your guiding hand. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Plaid allegiance, Commissioner Freeman-Morrison.
Oh, stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start today, Commissioner Williams is in Raleigh concerning a meeting on rail, so he will be absent today.
Do you want to touch on Commissioner?
Commissioner Acock is on, he's out of town. All right. We're ready. Do I have a motion to approve the February 7th, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
Any discussions?
Hold on just a second. That was Mr. Hardison?
My vote did not show up on my screen.
Mine neither.
Mine did. Get back to your, get back to your agenda thing. Get back to right here. Get back to that part. It should, it should come up now. But we're going to go out to the, can't we go back to the old fashioned way of raising our hand?
You certainly may.
Oh, you went to the wrong view.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead and just manually ask for the vote from everyone, Madam Chair.
Okay. Everybody raised their right hand if there's no more discussion on approving February 21st.
Those in favor of the minutes?
Those in favor of approved minutes of February 7th.
We're trying new technology.
There's no adjustments to the agenda. So you need, need to make a motion and approve the agenda.
No, make a motion to approve the agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. Raise your right hand if there's no discussion.
All right. Under Special Presentations, item number three is a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-5, a resolution awarding the service weapon to Lieutenant Richard Blizzard. And I'll read that since Lieutenant Blizzard is not here, but I feel it's important to read the resolution. It's, whereas Lieutenant Richard Blizzard retired from the county of Wayne effective March 1st, 2023, and whereas Richard Blizzard has been an employee of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, retiring as a lieutenant, and whereas Richard Blizzard has served 25 years with the Sheriff's Office in Wayne County. Throughout his years, he has earned admiration, respect, and friendship of those with whom he worked and came into contact. Now, for there it be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 hereby awards retired Lieutenant Richard Blizzard his service weapon in exchange for consideration of $1 and awards him his badge. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners extends best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to Richard Blizzard during his retirement and his in future endeavors adopted this date, 21st of February, 2023. And we will need a vote on that.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the Resolution 2023-5.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2023-5 for Lieutenant Richard Blizzard's retirement. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried.
Okay. Number four, thank you, ma'am. Number four, a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-6, awarding service weapon to Sergeant Bob Galamoski. Whereas Sergeant Bob Galamoski retired from the county of Wayne effective March 1st, 2023, and whereas Bob Galamoski has been an employee of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and retired as a sergeant, and whereas Bob Galamoski served 28 years with the Sheriff's Office in Wayne County. Whereas throughout his years, he earned admiration, respect, and friendship of those with whom he worked and came into contact. Now, therefore, it be resolved the Wayne County Board of Commissioners in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 hereby awards retired Sergeant Bob Galamoski his service weapon in exchange for consideration of $1 and awards him his badge. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners extends best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to Bob Galamoski during his retirement and his future endeavors adopted this, the 21st day of February, 2023.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the Resolution 2023-6, Sergeant Bob Galamoski?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion. Raise your right hand if you approve. Motion carried.
All right. Moving on to number five is a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-7, awarding service weapon to Lieutenant Robert Chun. Whereas Lieutenant Robert Chun retired from the county of Wayne effective March 1st, 2023, and whereas Robert Chun had been an employee of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and retired as a lieutenant, and whereas Robert Chun served 23 years with the Sheriff's Office in Wayne County. Whereas throughout his years, he earned the admiration, respect, and friendship of those with whom he worked and came into contact. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 hereby awards retired Lieutenant Robert Chun his service weapon in exchange for consideration of $1 and awards him his badge. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners extends best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to Robert Chun during his retirement and his future endeavors adopted this, the 21st day of February, 2023.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-7.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2023-7 for Lieutenant Robert Chun. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I ask Sheriff Larry Pierce, who will come up for the presentation of a retirement plaque for Mary Jane Bryant.
Good morning.
Good morning. He's ready.
They're here this morning to present a retirement plaque to Ms. Mary Jane Bryant for her many years of service with our detention center and a dedication to Wayne County. And presented to Mary Jane Bryant in recognition and appreciation of your many years of faithful and dedicated service, January 30, 1996 to December 31, 2022, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. And thank you so much.
I just want to say I enjoy my job and I miss it. And I enjoy, you know, working with inmates or lifting the inmates. And I had some good coworkers and I had an amazing sheriff. I appreciate you.
I would also like to say Lieutenant Nicole Reed was going to be here today to be presented a plaque, but Lieutenant Reed passed away week before last after a courageous battle with cancer. And I just want to remember her this morning and let you know that we appreciated her service and let the family know as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Moving on to number seven is a presentation by Wayne County ABC Director Darnay Bearfoot.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to come and present a distribution to you all on behalf of the Wayne County ABC Board. I just took over service there in the last two weeks, so these funds are coming from the prior general manager and existing board. But at this time, I would like to present the dividends that are issued to the board at this time for $118,000. And we hope to continue supporting our county, City of Goldsboro, and Mount Olive with these distributions because they go out to fund and help our community. And you all use it in very attractive ways and what does help our community. So if I can be of assistance to you in the future, and it's my new endeavor as the new general manager at the Wayne County ABC Board, feel free to call me. Look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bearfoot.
Yes, sir, Mr. Curle.
Congratulations on your new position. It's kind of come full circle from the William Street days, I guess, but we know you're going, we know you're going to do us a great job.
Thank you, sir. It has come full circle.
No worries. I've been a good friend for a long time.
We'll, we'll talk about that full circle with it at no time.
Madam Chair, you're a chairman. I spoke with him yesterday. He said, please get you in and out of here so you can get back to work. But congratulations on your new position. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And I can help y'all. Let me know.
All right. Madam Chair, moving on to number eight, a motion to approve a 2023 Flowers Timber Company proclamation presented by Julie Graham.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have with me Jeremy Flowers and Arnold Flowers here today. I am here to present a proclamation honoring Flowers Timber Company, a Wayne County industry. Before I do the proclamation, I just want to tell you a little bit about them. This company was recently awarded the 2022 Governor's Export Award for Top Global Reach Exporter. Flowers Timber Company was also awarded the Ag Exporter of the Year by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. The Governor's Export Award celebrates and honors manufacturing companies for sales growth in international markets. The award program started in 2017 up under Cooper's administration in collaboration with the North Carolina Department of Commerce and the Partnership of North Carolina. Our existing industries are so important to our state and county. They account for over 80% of expansions that occur in our state. Flowers Timber Company was established in 1976 and remains a family-owned business that operates as both a forestry supplier and a sawmill. So I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas Flowers Timber Company Incorporated has been an existing industry in Wayne County since 1976, whereas Flowers Timber Company Incorporated is a second-generation forestry supplier and sawmill company located in Seven Springs, North Carolina. Whereas the company is family-owned and serves eastern North Carolina and focuses on exports of logs to numerous countries such as China, Vietnam, India, Pakistan, Cambodia, and Spain. Whereas Flowers Timber Company is actively participates in the North Carolina Department of Agriculture's International Marketing Program and works hard to expand its export opportunities. Whereas Governor Roy Cooper presented Flowers Timber Company with the Governor's Export Award for Global Reach. Whereas agriculture, Steve Trotzler recognized Flowers Timber Company as the 2022 North Carolina Timber Exporter of the Year. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does recognize and applaud the great service of Flowers Timber Company in Wayne County, the great state of North Carolina, and throughout the world. And thanks the company and family for calling Wayne County home.
I appreciate the thanks. So I wanted to say a few little things and think, give thanks where thanks is due. I want to thank my mom and dad for, when I first started doing this, I was working out of Virginia and I rented a yard up there. And then some things happened with some of the trade issues with China and I moved home, which was the greatest thing that ever happened. And mom and dad supported me and helped me pick a place to put it. And then we had good luck with DOT and they helped us get access in there and get a little permits. And then as my business started growing, I wanted to put a sawmill in. So we had good luck with the whole time through. The Agriculture Department's always helped us a bunch. North Carolina State Porch has always helped us a bunch. Tri-County EMC, believe it or not, they, they were very nice and helpful and didn't charge me an arm and a leg to pull three-phase current in there. A lot of people in other states I travel, talk about how expensive it is and how problematic it is, but they were very easy to deal with, have always been willing to help us. And I mean, I was just working. I never thought I was going to get an award for this, but I traveled all over the world. And the Agriculture Department in North Carolina, since we had the trade war with China, has been very instrumental in having trade missions to foreign countries to develop new markets. And I've, I've helped them with a lot of information that I had. And matter of fact, Saturday, I just got back from, from Mexico. We were in Monterrey, Mexico, and Guadalajara, Mexico, and did a lot of meetings with one-on-one buyers there. And I had traveled to France with them. And then we have done inbound trade missions where they brought in buyers from Pakistan and India, China, Vietnam, Malaysia. And I'm continually working with them to get more markets for the state of North Carolina. So I just, I say thank you for, for this and I continue to keep doing what I'm doing.
You go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could, if y'all come around here and let's get a picture.
That would be great.
Come on around here if you will.
Make a motion.
Motion.
Oh, let me make the motion then. I move that we approve the 2023 Flowers Timber Company Incorporated proclamation.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to approve the 2023 Flowers Timber Company proclamation. So moved. Raise your right hand, please.
Great. Great. So if y'all can come to stand in front of us, we'd like to get a picture. I mean, it's not every day that you get exporter of the year.
Just look straight up at those cameras and Joel will be taking the picture from the other room. All right, we're good.
Good.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
If anybody needs any lumber or firewood, we'll just call them on Saturday morning. Let's see. I'll be there.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Thank you. Good shit.
That's a big deal.
Very big deal. You would have known I'd be here.
I know. You wouldn't.
I would. Because I need a sawmill sometimes.
Okay, Madam Chair, moving on to number nine, it's a WATCH presentation by Sissy Lee Elmore.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Okay.
I invited Sissy to here to speak on behalf of WATCH because I don't think the county, our citizens, know the great work they're, they're doing for our citizens. And so I just want to say thank you and continue to do good work even before you give your presentation.
Thank you, Freeman. I'll just kick this off. My name is Murray Porter and I'm the Board Chair of WATCH. And many of you I know and some I don't know. So some new faces, Madam Chairman, and some others that I've not met. But I want to say to Ms. Bryant, I think she just left, but she's just retired, you know, working with the Sheriff's Department. I retired about 20 years ago. And for the last 20 years, I've spent quite little time, extra time I have, helping Ms. Elmore with the WATCH program. I'm a volunteer. I've never, never been paid a penny and don't ever expect to be paid a penny. And I'm grateful to, to you all so much. I wanted to come this morning to say thank you. I always, when I come to city and county commissioners, that's the first thing that's on my mind. You don't know how much we appreciate all that you all have done for many, many years to help us. And we're helping a lot of people in Wayne County and we're going to continue to help a lot of people in Wayne County. But again, I just want to say thank you very much and, and we're happy to be here and hopefully we're doing a good job that you all can appreciate.
And I've given you some statistics. You can see that in the past 22 years, we're at 194,654 visits. We're almost at 200,000. We'll actually hit 200,000 patient visits this year. And this year, we gave out 7,831 30-day prescriptions free with a value of $5.7 million. We also started a new pharmacy this year on site for people who didn't qualify for the Prescription Assistance Program. And so far, we've served with 1,840 prescriptions, 834 patients, for a value of prescriptions of 211,000. And also I've given you some stories of patients who've been to the WATCH pharmacy and how their blood pressure has improved. Blood pressure was one of the main reasons that we started our own pharmacy because we have, 45% of our patients have hypertension and 27% of our patients have diabetes. So those are the two main diseases that we track. And there were not medications available for high blood pressure on the free Prescription Assistance Program. But now we're able to provide those prescriptions to our patients through the new pharmacy that we opened in April. And I'd like to say thank you for all the years. It's been, August will be 23 years that we've been in operation. We've wore out one truck after 20 years and got a new truck. It's what, this is the third year of the new truck. And we've had your support all these years and we do appreciate it. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Sissy, maybe you've touched on this, but on item number five, for every $1 we provide
is from the county. You're raising 4.57. So that, that's amazing.
Thank you. Our return on investment, when you look at all of the donations to the hospital, which, you know, they give a lot of money and they give free labs and they pay me so I don't have to raise money for my own salary. You know, it's about $10 to $1 on the total program return on investment.
If any Commissioners who haven't seen the new shirt, I suggest you, next time you see it, take a look at it.
We'd be glad to have you or we'll bring it to you or just call me and let me know and we'll have it there on campus and you can come see. In the old days, the provider, which a nurse practitioner, would have to go out with a drill on the outside in the rain, whatever the weather was, the heat, and so that she could put the feet down on the truck. Now, you press a button and they go down. That's exciting. That was, they thought the best thing about the new truck was not having to stand in the rain with a drill. We'd love to have you and thank you so much.
Thank you, Sissy. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate you coming.
Next is a presentation by Joel Gillie on The Wings Over Wayne 2023.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mr. Vice Chair, Board. I'm going to get my PowerPoint pulled up here really quickly. Wings Over Wayne is upon us again. Thank goodness. We had a few years of cancellations, of course, due to COVID. So our last Wings Over Wayne was 2019. It seems like it was a lot sooner than that, but goodness gracious, time's flying. Just a quick little overview of Wings Over Wayne 2019. So you can see here, over 150,000 visitors came to Wayne County or, or visited Wings Over Wayne. But out of that, 70% or more were from 30 miles away. So that's a pretty cool stat. It's bringing a lot of people into the county, a lot of heads in beds, which helps our tourism dollars and things like that. Over $6.4 million in economic impact, all that data is from travel and tourism. I didn't calculate that myself. This year, it's going to be May 20th and 21st. For anybody listening that has not heard about it yet, it's a free event. Parking is free, admission's free. The gates will open at 8:00 a.m. and the full schedule, they have it on their website. It's wingsoverwayneairshow.com. A lot of performers going to be there. The Blue Angels are the big headliner performer for this, this year's airshow as well. So that's always a big draw. We are a sponsor of this event as we have been every single year. This money was budgeted back in this year's budget for the airshow sponsorship. And so you'll see our advertising, our advertising and our support in print, in visual things that are out at the airshow. We also have the, the chalet that we had in the years past for Saturday and Sunday. Our, our main goal in speaking with you all today is just to figure out how we want to use that chalet. So in the years past, it's been used for a number of different things. But most recently in 2019, we allowed our employees to use it. It was a benefit to employees so they got to register for a number of spots in the chalet, bring their families out and enjoy it as a family. And we provided some food and refreshments throughout the day as well. And that's gone over really well. I know that people have been contacting the county manager's office already saying, hey, can we, these are employees, can we get on the list for the Wings Over Wayne airshow again this year? Just wanted some direction from you all on how we wanted to proceed with that. Nothing has to be decided today, but just something to be in the back of your heads because we do need to go ahead and start rolling that out, how we're going to do it, who we're going to invite, that kind of thing. So just wanted to get it on y'all's radar and take some time and stew on it a little bit and just let us know how we want to proceed with our chalet for this coming year.
If I could interject as well, the Commissioners receive, and management as well, receive invitations from others that have chalets. So that's why we came up with the idea of sharing it with the employees because you already have opportunities to be a part of, of the upfront.
I think you guys are probably usually at the max chalet. You know, there's a lot of different ones that go on. And you, of course, are welcome in our chalet as well. But there typically does tend to be a lot of, a lot of elected official chalets that are, that are out there. And so this one was kind of a little bit, a little bit different for our employees is what we did last time. So any questions for me?
Thank you, Joel.
All right. Thanks, y'all.
All right. Thank you, Joel. Moving on to number 11 is an update from Fire Marshal Brian Taylor on the fire at National
Have you got, you got the PowerPoint?
Do I have the PowerPoint?
Probably not the question you just wanted me to ask you.
Okay, maybe, maybe Joel can come in and help us.
Joel, if you're listening?
Joel. Joel.
Well, I will look for that. Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come here and just give you kind of an overview of the large response that we had on February 11th at the National Sandwich. Really, before I get started, I want to kind of introduce who I have here with me. I have Fire Chief Tommy Baker with the Morgan Fire Department, Chief Brandon Jones with Thirfer Fire Department, of course, you know Kendall Lee, our facilities director, which is also the chief of the Dudley Fire Department, and of course, Randy Rogers, our solid waste director, which is also the chief of Arrington Fire Department. Throughout my presentation, you'll see where I refer to command staff. Command staff is who I refer to, is everybody sitting behind me. One I didn't recognize is Michael Dawson, our emergency management coordinator. Also, our entire OES staff was, was present during, during this response. Or now one of my folks couldn't be here today because of, today is, they're going live with the, the new CAD system today so they couldn't be present here today.
I think there it is.
There it is. I care what I, will you?
You drive it yourself? Just pull that drawer out? There you go.
I'll, I'll try. Kind of what I wanted to do, Joel was a big help helping get this put together, but I kind of wanted to paint a picture for you and for the public of what the response looked like and what challenges.
like and what challenges were faced during this response. So we'll just go ahead and get started. There we go. Maybe I won't mess this up. Of course, just a little background on National Savage and Service Corporation. The Dudley site where the actual fire happened was roughly 54 acres. It's just a little over 54 acres of the actual site where the fire was. They own some additional property across the street, but that wasn't involved. They do, their business was to repurpose railroad ties. They've done anything from grinding them up for fuel to providing, providing them for landscaping, driveways, whatever, whatever they could sell them for, that's kind of what they did. And of course, you know, the, the site here is highlighted by the red diagram. That is the site where the fire took place. And on to a timeline. Roughly 1:28 a.m., Marmak Fire Department was dispatched to a woods fire. If I remember correctly, it was, it was dispatched as a woods fire, which with that, the forestry service has automatically dispatched all woods fires in the county, so the forestry service has dispatched with them also. At 1:35, the Marmak Fire Chief arrived on the scene, and he saw what he had. Saw the intensity of the fire, and he immediately requested mutual aid from Arrington, Thirifer, and Dudley Fire Departments. At 1:38, he requested myself, CSX, and a DOT representative respond to the scene. These pictures here, the one on the left is roughly 10 minutes or so after they arrived on scene. It took them a little bit of time because they knew what they had. But they, you can kind of see what they were facing right, right to start with. That picture on, on the, on the left, there, at this point in time, Tommy, you correct me if I'm wrong, we were, they were throwing about 2,000 gallons a minute at this fire in an effort to try to bring it under control. The picture on the right, they added a two-and-a-half-inch line, which put them up to about 2,250 gallons a minute that they were, they were putting on this fire. As you can tell, the picture on the right, they were making a little headway with, with the amount of water they were throwing. Once mutual aid started arriving, I think between Chief Rogers and Tommy got together and decided it might be better, let's try to get Dudley's ladder in, get more of a downward approach on it, see if we could bring it under better control at that point. At this point in time, it was roughly 2,700, 2,800 gallons per minute being thrown on the initial fireside. I'm not going to hit every one of these timelines. You can kind of look at it. Command did, you know, request Seymour Johnson's fire truck. Forestry Ranger got on the scene. Myself was on the scene. He also wanted notification of the water districts, because we knew at this point there's going to be large amounts of water, and we wanted those water departments to know that, hey, we flow in large amounts of water, so any additional pumps or anything that you could turn on to assist in that would be appreciated. About 2:30 that morning, Ranger One decided, you know, talked with Command and wanted to do a survey, and we were looking at trying to do some fire breaks within the facility. We didn't really know how these things were stacked in there, but we wanted to see what we could do to try to alleviate the rest of the piles from catching on fire. So he started that. During his survey, he noticed a spot fires happening back behind the fire that we couldn't see from the roadway. So there was personnel deployed to start handling those spot fires at the same time. After Ranger One done his initial site survey, he determined that there was very limited access to the site to get back to where these piles were. The height of the piles, the configuration, the way they were in there, it just wasn't safe or a viable option to put any kind of equipment or manpower in there to try to do anything to put some fire lines in, if you will. About 3:18, 3:15, 3:18, there was some consideration with Command. And when I say Command at this point, it's all on Tommy at this point. I think Randy had an operational area. Brandon also had an operational area, and Kendall, I know he was in the mix somewhere, but I know Kendall later on, he, he had his own operational area. We started considering putting a water hall, and I, and I'll show you some pictures here in a little bit of what that looks like, to increase our available water, because we were, we were limited, because you had two hydrants, one in front of the facility and one that was just west of the railway tracks. So we were limited on what water we could, we could do. So we needed to bring in some additional water. So we were making that consideration at that point in time, just to provide some additional protection for those ones doing, taking care of the spot fires. Of course, before that plan could get fully enacted, there was a spot fire detected just, I guess it was southwest, southwest of the off, the main office building. We immediately deployed some hand lines to that area. However, due to the location of that spot fire, we couldn't get to it. We looked other alternate routes to get in there to try to bring that under control. But everywhere we looked, the access was blocked, and we couldn't, we couldn't get in there. at 3:47, we requested Rosewood New Hope and Tanker Task Force One. Tanker Task Force One, what that is, is a predetermined tankers from all our volunteer departments here in the county. We have two of those task forces. Each task force can carry in excess of 10,000 gallons of water to the scene. At 4:45, Belfast Ladder was dispatched to provide additional exposure protection for the east side of the office. Around 5:00 a.m. that morning, Dudley Ladder One was repositioned from the original site to come in and provide additional exposure protection for the west side of the office. And this picture here kind of gives you an idea. This, of course, is after daybreak on Saturday when this picture was taken, but you can see the location of where Belfast's ladder to the left and Dudley's ladder to the right and the building we're trying to protect there in the middle. This is just a couple pictures for the tanker shuttle operation. Picture on the right is just the field site where they were fielding tankers at a hydrant just down the road from the fireside. Picture on the left shows you with drop tanks down. We utilizing three drop tanks at that point. Each one of those drop tanks carried a minimum, hold a minimum of 2,100 gallons of water. So we were using three, dumping three tankers at the time, and then they would leave and go, go to the field site to be fielded and just reroute back. The command staff, and I say the command staff, everybody behind me kind of got together, you know, and we talked about this, and what can we do? So after looking at the site, we had limited access into the, into the facility. There was limited water that we could, we could use. We were already using every amount of water that we could, we could get our hands on, just to protect the areas that we were protecting. And the decision was made that access into the plant, and due to the, the way these railroad ties were in there, it wasn't worth putting equipment and manpower in the back to try to protect that back building, because that back building was also surrounded by these railroad ties. We, everyone behind me, along with myself, saw how quick the fire progressed from what I call that last spot fire. When that fire happened, probably in a matter of 10 minutes, it was bigger than the original fireside. It happened, the, the intensity of the fire and the amount of water we were, we were putting on the initial fireside led us to know that we couldn't, we could not stop this as it continued to grow. We just didn't have the resources for water. We could have got the trucks there if, if we'd had access to the site, but we had that one access right there where Belfast had landed. It was the only access to this entire site. So that's why that decision was made, not, not to go further into the facility. Around 5:17, I can't say enough about Joe. I know you guys hear Joe, thanks to Joe all the time. Joe is, he does so much for everybody here in the county. He done a great job for, for us on this fire scene. He was instrumental in getting this PowerPoint put together for you guys, and, and not to thank Joe and his team is, they just do such a great job for us here in the county. DOT got there, set up the road, road closures for, for the area. At 6 o'clock, around 6 o'clock that morning, we dispatched Tanker Task Force Two. So that gave us an additional 10,000 gallons, 11,000 gallons of water. So at this point, we're hauling about 20,000 gallons of water with these tankers. Also, around that time, when there was two houses on the east side of the facility that we decided we'd evacuate. They were adjacent to the facility. We knew the intensity of the fire was going to get to such that we needed to get those residents out. They were contacted by OES staff, and each, each one of the residents had somewhere they said they could go, so they went and stayed with relatives and friends until the fire was brought under control. Around 6:30 that morning, the Marmak Chief, he established, decided that we're going to move Command to the Old Wind Dixie parking lot there in, in Marmak. And then also the sheriff, he's already gone, sheriff contacted Johnston County Sheriff and asked if we could use their mobile Command, which they're, they gladly brought it over and let us use that for a couple of nights. Also, I notified emergency management at the state level to let them know what was going on, because at this point, we didn't know how much help we were going to have to have from the outside. So they were notified, and along with that, North Carolina Emergency Management made contact with North Carolina Air Quality and Water Quality on our behalf. And later that day, I talked to both of those agencies, make them aware and give them a little more detail in what was going on and what the problems we were seeing were. Around 7:30, contacted Duke County for additional units from, I think it was Clipo and Facing brought units in to help with some exposure protections that we were going to have to do, and also to provide some additional support for spot fires, as far as grass fires and that kind of thing. Of course, there was multiple spot fires that were being reported in the area, and as they were reported, we sent units to take care of that. The forestry service later on provided some airdrops from an airplane. We had requested, hopefully, that we could get helicopters in to help maintain that, that line around it. We knew the facility itself. We couldn't do anything there, but if we could contain this within that facility, that was our goal. Also, about 11 o'clock, I contacted North Carolina State Fire Marshal's office after we and Command decided that this was going to be an ongoing thing. Our county resources have been there, some of them since 1:30 that morning. So we need to get some support in for nighttime operation, and that's what we did there. About 2, about 2:30 that afternoon, OSFM staff arrived at the command post and assisted with that operation. About 4 o'clock, and county departments started arriving. As they arrived, there were some fire situations towards the front of the facility where we needed additional tankers. So these tankers come in, and we put them right in line, and they started their operation. By about 9:00 p.m. that night, that Saturday night, all our county departments have cleared the scene, and our Anna County operation, Anna County departments took over the operations for the night. Around 4:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, the operation was reduced to one engine crew, just for the protection of that office. There were still some railroad ties that were really close to that office that we were having to, having to keep that protection in place. That operation was maintained until midnight. Once that was, once Command decided that they felt comfortable not having a truck there, Wayne County Sheriff's Department was contacted, and they brought a sheriff deputy out and maintained control of the site for the rest of the night. About 12:41 the next day is when investigators made initial entry to the facility. Also, the Marmak Chief and I, we, that was our, around that time is when we done our initial site survey of the entire site for, for damages. Marmak and the forestry service continued to monitor the site for containment throughout the day on Monday. Late Monday afternoon, there were some additional operations conducted to limit, there was some stuff smoldering, the wind had got up a little bit, so we felt like we needed to take care of those situations and also try to improve that air quality for the people that stayed across the road. Wind had changed directions, and the folks right across the street on Old Mile Highway was, the smoke was pretty heavy in that area at that point in time. The site was turned over, back over to the company at approximately 6:30 p.m. on Monday. However, OES, Marmak, and others continued to monitor the site throughout the week for which way the smoke was going, you know, any additional hotspots, make sure it was still maintained within those fire lines. The fire is currently under investigation. The sheriff's office, of course, is leading that investigation, along with the North Carolina Forestry Service, State Bureau of Investigation, Department of Insurance. They're all part of that team leading this investigation in what started this and how it started. Preliminary losses right now were at $2.8 million. This isn't, this is everything on site. The facility operators give us an estimate of 1.8 million railroad ties that were on site, and they value those at $0.75 apiece. But also with that is the back building, which was a shop that they used as a shop. It had very little contents in, within that shop. But there were six or seven trucks that were inoperable on the outside of the shop that burned. There was two trucks inside the shop, along with a backhoe inside the shop that burned too. So the majority of this is from, from their loss. However, there was some damage that we discovered later on that was indirect cause of the flying embers and stuff from this. SPX there has some roof damage, and there was actually a fire alarm that came in for that during this operation. And once they got there, they realized they had a fire on the roof, so had to send units on the roof, cut that out. And later, during evaluation, I think there was 30 to 40 holes that had burned in their roof on, at SPX. We later found out there was some damage at the fairgrounds also. I know all of you know the big white building, it's basically a canvas type cover. It does have some holes in it that's going to have to be repaired, so we're waiting on some additional estimates on damage before we can get a, a total damage. Also, Duke Energy and Tri County, Tri County had a main line to run right in front of this area, and Duke Energy had a line that was going into the facility along with a large transformer that was in there that all received damage, so we're waiting on some estimates from them also. So we're waiting on some estimates from them also. These next few slides are just kind of pictures of the operation as it kind of went on. This picture on the left is pretty, pretty amazing to me. That picture was taken at the Elroy Fire Station out on 70 East. Once we dispatched the tanker task force, of course, Elroy's on that and this is what the fire chief saw when he went out his front door of his house. Just additional pictures. The picture on the right, you can kind of see the size of the fire as it progressed. Of course, picture on the left, the command truck in Johnston County was so gracious to let us use. Picture on the right is just, I'm not sure where that picture was taken. It was one, one that we were able to get from some distance away. You can kind of see what it looked like at daybreak that morning on Saturday. This is what the site looked like on Monday. I believe this shot here was on Monday. You can see the difference in it everywhere. You see the ash, there was, that entire area was filled with railroad ties. Now we come to the, to a big thank you. I can't say enough about these guys behind me. The early decision making on Tommy to get certain agencies involved helped on the, on the back end of this response. These guys behind me, they work really well together. They work well together on a daily basis, but on, and that proved to be invaluable on this response. They communicated well, they made good decisions in my opinion. In this large response that we had, not a single injury happened. We didn't get a cut finger, we didn't get a twisted ankle or anything on this response. I think in this whole response, they all kept safety as, as their number one priority during this whole response and that was evident that we didn't have any injuries. One of the biggest thank yous is at our community. I know most of you or all of you know that we got a great community here and great community support here in Wayne County. It's unbelievable when we have incidents, whether it's a large fire like this, whether it's a hurricane or whatever, our community comes out and supports us in ways that we, we never thought was possible. But from our, there was churches, civic groups, individuals that would just come up to the command area. Here, we want to provide this for our first responders. That was invaluable. We were able to keep everybody that was there fed, hydrated and everything, which, which helped us tremendously and we, we can't thank our community enough. Our first responders, everybody that responded to this, this fire. We had 23 of 26 departments in Wayne County at this location during the day on Saturday. We had, I can't remember how many Anna County departments we had, but we had representation from Pamlico County, Craven County, Lenore County, Duplin, Johnston, and I may be missing one somewhere along the way, but those Anna County agencies came in and done a superb job that night, which allowed our, our county departments to get some rest because we didn't know what the next day was going to bring. And this is a, a list of agencies involved. I can't say enough, you know, to thank you to Wayne County on behalf of Wayne County the support that these folks give us. And at this point, at this point, I'm going, Tommy wants to say anything, I'm going to let him get up and if you have any questions or anything, we'll be glad to ask.
I won't take much of your time. As chief of the fire department in Marmak, I do appreciate everything that everybody did. Everybody responded to our community with a strong presence. Everybody stayed safe. I appreciate Mr. Commissioner Gurley and Commissioner Wayne Acock. They both showed up on scene and helped us. There was a lot of collaboration of getting fuel, just the logistics into things. We had to get a fuel truck there, we had to get, then we realized, you know, these newer trucks run death fluids, so it was pallet of death fluid. Just allocating resources, you know, facilities for everybody to be able to, be able to use the restroom, dumpsters. I mean, there was just so many things involved, but I appreciate this group behind me. All of them did an excellent job. Randy, you know, he took an operations area. Kendall had operations area. Brandon was assigned safety when we started. You know, and there's, of course, we, we felt like everything went very well, nobody got hurt. We didn't lose any property off site. We did have damage, but we didn't lose any property off site and that was very important to me to focus on that. But all in all, I can't say how well it went. I think it went really good. Couldn't have done it without everybody involved and everybody working together. There wasn't no, you know, there's jobs on the fire scene some people don't want, but I want to give a shout out to Jeff Brooks, the chief of Fremont Fire Department. He had his S U V there and we were trying to figure out how we were going to get food to everybody. It was like clockwork. Every 15 to 30 minutes, they were bringing food and drinks to all the crews. So they really knocked that out of the park and they continued that for 24 hours. They just kept running, running, running. So I can't say enough to everybody. I can't mention all the names. O S F M, Darryl Rayner and Mr. Tony Bailey stayed in the command post with us, helping us make decisions. But all in all, I think it went well. And of course, there's always things we can improve on. We're going to do some debriefings and do some after action plans to see what we could do even better. But I can't say enough for the people in the community for bringing food to church groups, to Boy Scouts. I mean, people just dropping water off at every site. We had so much food, we had a ton left over, so we donated that to the Red Cross, some of the local food pantries and few food kitchens, depending on the people donated it to us, we wanted to pass it on to other folks. But I can't say enough for every organization, the sheriff's office, the city maintenance department for helping us with some water issues we had, Southern Wayne Sanitary District for making sure we had plenty of water. Some of the people in the area did suffer some water loss and down pressure for a while, so we were trying to mitigate that issue. But just everything going on, it went smooth, couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with. You know, it, it just went very well and I can't say much, how much I appreciate the community and their help and all the businesses that donated. But without this whole group, it's not a one person thing, it's a whole group thing and everybody did an excellent job. Like I said, I think the thing I'm most proud of is we didn't report an injury and when you have almost 400 firemen there working some odd hours, EMS didn't have to, fortunately for EMS, they didn't have to work too hard, they had to be there, but we didn't get anybody hurt and we didn't have any civilians get hurt and we didn't lose any more property around it. We had damage, but we didn't lose any. So I'm very proud of that and I can't say enough to the crowd that's behind me here that how hard they worked. And like I said, I appreciate the commissioners, they were there. Of course, there was financial concerns and they said, well, we'll deal with that later. Let's just get it done. So, but thank you to everybody and I can't say enough how much I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Brian, I mean, I know how stressful it is to be in that situation at all. I mean, there's been some situations like that before. You got to make decisions and go with them and you did a great job. The whole team did a great job. Leave Chip out, Chip was there on the scene as well, county manager. But I tell you, it makes you proud to be a emergency service, be in emergency service family in Wayne County and, and there's a lot of, a lot of great compliments from, from people across the state that I've contacts with over the years that has made, you know, want to know if there's anything they could do, but we appreciate what y'all done and your community does too. And let me say, and Chris, thank you for reminding me, but the support that you, Commissioner Acock and our county manager give us while we were there is, I mean, that goes a long way. I know others, you know, were probably supporting us in the background, but, but to have that, that there to say, hey, we need this and to be able to say, we'll deal with that later goes a long way. So, and we, you know, we appreciate all the support commissioners give to our volunteers throughout the county, not, not just ones here today, but throughout the county. They provide a service to us that's, and Wayne County's always had a great fire service anyway. But they, you know, we continue to try to provide that service, you know, for our citizens in the county.
Continuing on that, I mean, the majority of these, these firefighters were volunteers.
Yes.
And they took, they left at 1:15 or whatever and some of them didn't get back till, you know, 6, 7 o'clock, Sunday mornings.
Yeah, some of, yeah. Every, every one other than one department, Kent Fire Department sent a truck over, but they had to ask for people that were off duty, you know, to volunteer their time and whether they got paid for that or not, I don't know. But every one of these Anna County agencies were a volunteer and they took time, you know, they were, they were contacted, you know, shortly after 11 o'clock on Saturday and they were at our place by 4 o'clock.
But that says a lot for the volunteer fire service in eastern North Carolina.
Yes.
That they took their, you know, their volunteer out of county, you know, took their, their weekend basically to come help us and we really appreciate it.
And that, you know, and it goes on to say that our volunteers, everybody that responded were volunteers and some of those came out at 1:30 in the morning and didn't go home till well after midnight because once Wayne County departments were released, their job wasn't done because they had to go back to station, get the trucks back in service.
People don't realize how much, I mean, some, some kind of, I might will say complaint, but maybe second guess, some of our purchases that we have to make in the fire service and if it's got red paint on it or yellow paint, depending on which fire department you're on, it's, it's expensive and it's getting more expensive every day.
If it's for work.
There's no telling how many millions of dollars of fire equipment was on the, was on the scene. I got, I got one picture, well, I've got 100 pictures, but I got one picture of the, the tanker task force just sitting in front of, in front of the place midday Saturday, actually right after I talked to you, Randy. And it's just, I mean, and we're talking two plus thousand gallon tankers.
Yes.
Sitting there and they're, it's, it's just, you said, I mean, you know, it's kind of one of the things you hope you don't ever need it when you buy it, but when you need it, you need it. And so that's.
And I don't think I'd be doing the association or a volunteer fire department's justice if I didn't put this little plug in for, for anybody out there in the community. And it doesn't really matter if you're listening to this in another state or another county. The volunteer fire service needs your help. There's a position or a job for every single member in the community on the fire department. Not everybody wants to fight fire. Not everybody wants to drive the truck, but there is a job, whether it's, you know, if you're good with financials, there's a job for that. If you're good with record keeping, there's a job for that. So if, if there's anybody out there that, that wants to volunteer or's got some time to volunteer, the association has a, a committee put together for recruitment and retention. They have a website they can go to, they can contact my office and I'll be glad to direct them and give them some information on the volunteer fire service. So I think it would be injustice if I didn't put that little plug in while I was here today.
Commissioner Gurley, I'd do the same thing at his. We're blessed to have a, a strong emergency service office. As you said earlier, Wayne County's been at the forefront of fire service for many years. I think we kind of broke Michael in the hard way. One of the biggest fires that we've ever had in the county, but as emergency management director, but it's, we're blessed to have you and, and our community knows that. Thank you.
Ryan, I got to point to you, one officer standing in my stance, everyone, the guys did a great job and God bless you. Second, just looking at the fire and the location, it appears there was no planning by this company with fire in mind. And that leads to my second point is, do you guys participate with companies just to go in and do a site plan or in case of a fire?
In a lot of cases, the fire, the volunteer fire departments, those areas within their district, they'll reach out and I know, I know they go out and I know, I know everybody behind me has places in their district where they go out. I wouldn't say a regular basis, but at least once a year or so to pre-plan it, if you will. What would we do if this happened? I know for a fact that this particular facility, the fire chief and myself had had at least two or three conversations on what would we do if this happened? And really and truly, I think with our conversations that we had and me happened to be the one that was on call for emergency services that night, I think that fit well because I knew what Tommy was thinking and he kind of knew what I was thinking as far as what, what we needed to do and that all, and I'm sure he had already discussed that with, with the other departments that are here today, but yes, that does happen quite a bit in the fire service and they go out and visit these places and do a pre-plan, if you will, on different scenarios.
And I take it unfortunate these companies sometimes don't listen to your recommendations. I said it so you wouldn't have to.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to come in.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing that. Can we see that this, his presentation gets put into our pocket, please?
The presentation?
Thank you, Mary. Sorry to create more work for you.
If Joe, if I don't say, Joe has some videos that you can probably, before you, and I will go, I'm going to say one more thing. Tommy, where's Tommy at?
Yes, sir.
That, that drone is a, is a great tool for the fire service.
Yes, I am, I'm already looking into purchasing a drone with the state, I'm getting it from the state of North Carolina.
Of course, we, the drone, personal use is one thing, but when you get into emergency service as part of it's another. So we are already looking into where we can get a drone. I don't want one that's super high dollar, but they can be used for search and rescue, water rescue, a lot of different things. We are looking into getting a drone and trying to get some people certified to fly the drone because if you use it on emergency, you have to have all your flight stuff and different things of that nature.
And Tommy, I think there's a grant out there for that.
Yes, that's the difficult part with my department is because we have too many, our paid staffing hurts us when it comes to grant time. If we have over six people that are being paid, then we don't, we're not really eligible for a lot of grants, but we're already looking into it. I mean, we're not talking about buying a, a major high dollar drone to start with, just a small one to kind of get started with, like the ones that were used. I believe they're around $1,700 a piece. So we're looking to get one of those and starting and implementing a plan to have one because the drones work tremendous and being able to do recon to make the next decisions. As Brian said, the, the building out back was 38,000 square feet. There was a bunch of talk about trying to save it. The safety factor wasn't there, but with having the drone helped a whole lot. And also just having phones, Randy was able to send me pictures, what we call reconnaissance pictures to say, hey, there's, it's not worth a truck or anybody's life to try to save this building at that time. So, but yes, we are looking into a drone purchase and getting, possibly getting a drone program started at our department to have different people certified to fly it.
Well, you can see that, you can see the progress, progression of the, of the fire, which way the wind's blowing, you know, that kind of thing, how it's progressed over a certain amount of time. I noticed that on the, because I was kind of riding.
Yes, and it, it progressed, it kind of progressed real quick to start with and then it kind of settled in that we, it was just such a big area, it progressed as it went, but.
About 2:15, the wind changed direction.
Yes, it did. Yes, it did. But I do appreciate everything that everybody's done and like I said, we're always striving to improve what we can do and we're going to have some briefings to see if we can do it even better next time. Hopefully there's not a next time, if it is, no offense, I just hope it's not the Marmak. It seems like I'm up here talking to y'all too much, but.
It's not all the time about fire trucks, it's, it's other equipment that assists in the fire.
Exactly. We have a little side by side, which was used for reconnaissance missions inside the plant, once we could get in there. So that helps some too. So, and we're also looking at purchasing a newer side by side here in the next year. So just a lot of things like that that, that help out. Again, we appreciate it and can't say enough for the help that we got from out of county and in county.
Thanks, sir.
So thank you. Y'all have a good day.
You too. Thank you. All righty, moving on to unfinished business. Number 12, a motion to approve a funding method for the construction of a 50,000 square foot building. foot building at Park East, shell building at Park East Industrial Park, and the appropriate budget amendment, and I'll refer to my memorandum, I'll try to explain it. This is regarding the funding options for 50,000 square foot shell building at Park East and the use of funds for the construction of a 30,000 square foot shell building. The next four items, number tw- on your agenda, number 12 through 15 are all related to this one memorandum. Wayne County Development Alliance is currently in the process of finalizing plans on the financing and payment for the construction of two shell buildings in the Park East Industrial Park. The original idea was to finance the two buildings through a non, no interest USDA loan sponsored through Tri-County. Those discussions were broken down, we could not get an agreement on it, and we've so far not been able to complete that, so I recommend that the proceeds from the sale of the Housakawa shell building that had been set aside for product development in the amount of $1,313,781 be put towards the constructions costs of the 30,000 square foot building, and the Wayne County Development Alliance will cover the remaining costs of the 30,000 square foot building. On the 50,000 square foot building, the total cost is $2,616,433, and in order to allow this project to move forwards, a budget amendment is being requested to use ARP revenue loss monies towards the construction of this building. From the sale of the building, the county would be reimbursed, the amount of the sale proceeds, any profits from the sale of either building would be used for future product development. And that goes back to the motions that I need, is a, a number 12, a motion to approve that funding method for the construction of a 50,000 square foot shell building at Park East Industrial Park and an appropriate budget amendment.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we approve the recommended funding method of a construction of a 50,000 square foot building at Park East Industrial Park and the appropriate budget amendment.
Okay, any discussion?
Are you seeing the votes on your board tip?
Not now. We did earlier, or I did.
Here we go.
Yep, got it.
I still do not have it.
How does it look with a vote for you, sir?
Refresh. There's, there's refresh.
Well, that's what refreshes don't think.
Do you have it? Yes, I have it.
If I has it, but me.
You have your hand.
I'll raise my hand.
And I'll vote yes for you. Madam Chair, are you voting on your tab? Yes.
Got to be a save too.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Number 13 is associated with the same memorandum, is approve the use of the Housakawa building proceeds towards the construction of a 30,000 square foot building at Park East and the appropriate budget amendment, and I would need a motion and a vote on that.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the use of the, should you pronounce that before?
Housakawa.
Building proceeds toward the construction of a 30,000 square foot building at Park East and the appropriate budget amendment.
Okay.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Number 14 is a motion to provide a notice to proceed on the construction of the 50,000 and the 30,000 square foot shell buildings at Park East pending attorney approval of the contracts, and I would need a motion and a vote on that one.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to provide a notice to proceed to construction 50,000 and 30,000 square foot shell building at Park East pending attorney approval of the contracts.
Did you get the vote?
No. Okay, thank you.
Motion passed unanimously.
The last one, because it is a economic development project, we need a motion to establish a public hearing on March the 7th, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioner's Meeting Room in the Wayne County Courthouse, Annex at 224 East Walnut Street, Goldsboro, North Carolina, to receive public comments regarding an economic development agreement between Wayne County and the Wayne County Development Alliance for the construction of the two shell buildings at Park East Industrial Park in Goldsboro. I would need a motion and a vote on that.
Madam Chair, make a motion to establish a public hearing on March 7.
Okay, we have a motion called for vote.
Yeah, I mean, there's the. What that's going on? How do you attend to the meeting?
All right, thank you on that. And that is all with that memorandum. Moving on to the consent agenda.
All right, we received the consent agenda during the briefing. If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right, hold tight, I'm getting there.
You got to sign.
All right, call for vote.
Your business? Still won't let you?
It's redone, it should come up the next time.
If I might, going out, Madam Chair, what, no one told me this, but when you sign in, you've got to actually join the meeting, and since I had not joined the meeting, then my votes were not showing up. So hopefully, now that I've joined the meeting, the votes will show up. Interesting, okay, thank you.
Thank you, John, you're quite welcome.
Okay, all right, moving on to new business. Item number 22 is a presentation by Finance Director Allison Spate, a quarterly financial statement for the county of Wayne fiscal year 2022, '23 through December 31st, 2022.
Good morning. All right, let's see here. All right, so I'm going to go over my slides, but in your agenda packets, you have a couple of reports that I provided, and that just gives you some more detailed information than what I'm going to present here today, because I'm going to be pretty brief, and then if you have any questions. So this information is from July through December of this year, of this fiscal year, and I'm going to start with the county and then go into tourism after that. So right now, our property tax revenues, we've collected 44.4 million for the year. That is 3.1 million more than this time last year, however, if you recall, we did have a tax rate increase, and some of that timing can be due to how our, our large taxpayers in, when they pay their bills, some of them, it might be December, and somebody, some of them, it may be January, so sometimes that can actually go back and forth. We've reached about 73.89% of our budget, which is typical because our big collection months are December and January. For vehicle taxes, we've collected about 4.3 million, and we are about 400,000 ahead of last year. This is also affected when you increase the tax rate, it does affect your vehicles, but again, you know, I know we've talked about this many times, the tax and tag program has really improved our collection rate, and so that does put it at almost 100%. So we have collected about 52.9% of our budget, so we are trending just a little bit ahead of our budget for the year. For our sales tax revenues, fortunately, we still have good news in that area, so last year, when we presented the budget, we did increase them by a good amount because we had had quite a bit of growth, but we weren't really sure, you know, if that growth would continue. That trend is continuing, we collected about 15.9 million to date, which is an increase of 1.7 million over last year. So what we're seeing right now is approximately, maybe a little over 9% growth of last year, so that's good news going into next year's budget. We've collected about 58% of what we budgeted, and this chart is just an 18-month chart for you, it just kind of gives you a visualization of where we are and how to, how that compares to prior months. Other updates, we are getting ready to kick off our budget process with departments on Thurs- excuse me, on Wednesday, that's a typo in my, in my presentation, so tomorrow, we are having a meeting with our departments. This is what we call their budget orientation meeting, and this is where we get together with all the departments, the county manager, assistant county manager, budget team, review what the expectations are, what it looks like our trends are for right now, what they can expect as far as, you know, updates to the system and things like that, and just gives them some guidance going forward, and then they are given a, a pretty good calendar of, of when everything's going to take place, their meetings, when they have to enter their information, and all of those things. We have been finalizing our CIP presentation with the county manager and the assistant, and with Davenport, and so that will be presented to you all when the manager's recommendation is presented to you, I think it's on the 15th or 16th of May, and so I think, I think we actually will have a work session to go over the CIP that day. So right now, we're just kind of, we're really in the beginning phases of working on anticipated revenues, and we still, there's still some that it's kind of hard to anticipate because some of our revenues in key areas do not really hit until March if they're quarterly, so some of that's still a little bit early to, to make estimates on, but we're getting there. The DSS health financing, I just wanted to give you a brief update on that, bank RFPs were sent out last Tuesday, they are due Thursday, March 2nd, excuse me, and then they will present, be presented on the following board meeting to you on March 7. We are going to most likely schedule a work session that day so that you all can talk with Davenport about what proposal might be best. They will be, they have asked for submittals from banks, but then we will also be looking at a potential public sale. And so just like you did with the detention center, you know, because interest rates are, we're in a rising interest rate environment, we'll look at that and determine, is it better to go public sale, is it better to do a direct bank financing, and, you know, how many years we want to spread that out and all those things. So we plan to have a work session that day to give you all plenty of time to discuss that and, and make a good decision on that. We do anticipate the closing date on that financing to be sometime in May, so we are working with the LGC staff and Davenport to make sure that we meet all the requirements so that we can have that done. And, and that's all I have for the county, I want to be brief, I know you all had a full agenda today, but if any of you have any questions, only thing I presented for the county, or otherwise I'll move on to tourism.
I think I'll just see if we can go in February.
In Feb- oh, it went well, it went well, I, we sat in on it, but it was on consent agenda, so it was, it was approved, no problems.
Yeah, anytime you stuff's on consent agenda, you're okay.
Yes, once we get that agenda and see where it is, then we can breathe a sigh of relief. So yes, that did.
One question, Councilor, not on this actually, but it's still concerning the budget.
Yes, sir.
Payroll, the bi-weekly, how is that going? I got a couple of complaints saying, I just wanted to know how it was going from your end.
So, I mean, as good as it can, you know, a lot of this is based on our employees engaging with us and the information we've provided them, so from our standpoint, we're still on track to have the transition begin in March with full completion in April. We have worked with HR to do town hall meetings, we've got a microsite set up, we've done YouTube videos, we've had department head meetings, and we've sent out pay, pay stubs that were test pay stubs so the employees can see what a potential check might look like. There's a tool online where they can plug their salary in and see what that's going to look like, and the latest effort to kind of reach everybody and get questions addressed was they are going to, they being people on my staff and HR, are going to hold sort of like open office hours to allow individual employees to come in, I think they have two dates set, so that they can come in and ask like real specific questions about their pay stubs, so like if they got that pay stub, they can come in and say, okay, I don't really understand this, can you explain it to me?
Okay, so you said, when you're, when are you doing that?
Um, mm, 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 there was an email that went out, I'll have to get that information for you. There was an email that went out, I think to all employees, I believe, and then it, I believe it was stated for managers that, for employees that don't have emails to make sure that the employees do get this information, that they can attend those.
Okay, because that was, just the main questions were, some were complaining saying that they didn't, at the bi-weekly, that their salary was changing over the year, and I was just like, I don't know how that could be possible, but, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
I understand how people get confused sometimes, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because I mean, one month could have three weeks in it, the, the other one, you're getting paid twice, the other one, you're getting paid three times, so it could look a little bit different.
Right.
But as long as it come out to be the same thing at the end of the year, so I'm not a financial guru, but, you know what I'm saying, I was trying to explain the best that I could, but knowing that you're having that, I'm, I'm, I mean, as long as they get a better understanding, so.
Yes, sir, and the other.
March the 1st and 2nd.
March the 1st and 2nd, thank you, thank you. So March the 1st and 2nd, and that, that's for all employees, and they can come, they don't have to make an appointment, they can come and talk with staff and get those questions answered for the employees that may be asking you those specific questions. Another good resource for them is our microsite, it's wanggov.com/payroll. There is a, there's all kinds of information on there, but there is a tool that they can go to, Public Affairs really helped us out making this like really user friendly, you can put your base salary in, and it'll spit out what it's going to look like for bi-weekly.
Okay, that'd be great, that's great, that's great.
And that may help them see how the timing is going to catch up, because there is a timing difference.
Okay, that's what I figured it, because, you know, different weeks have, might have three, like you said, three different pay periods in it, some months, I'm sorry, may have three different pay periods, so it may look a little bit different.
That's true, and like this year in 2023, and one of the things we've been doing in our presentation to departments is this year in September, they'll have three pay periods in one month, but then next year, they'll have, that happen twice, so it does all depend on the timing and things like that.
Okay.
Yes, sir, but thank you for bringing that up, and any other questions, feel free to direct them our way, we're happy to answer them.
Will do.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to tourism. I'd like to give you all an update on Tourism Authority, because, you know, that board, well, it is part of the county, it's a separate entity, but it is something that you all have worked on to create legislation for, and you do have representation on that board. So just to give you kind of a quarterly update for them, we finished our audit up and received an unmodified opinion, so it does have to have a separate audit and budget, and our collections at year end at FY22 was about almost 40,000 over budget. Our fund balance did increase, our revenues exceeded our estimates, last year was a little difficult because we were rebounding from COVID, so it will, it was hard to tell, but thankfully, we did come in above budget, and this year is still trending upwards, of course, Wings Over Wayne that Joel talked about earlier will help tremendously with that, I think, and so our revenues are already almost 100, 120,000 for the year, but we are trending above budget, we're about 7.4% over where we were last year at this time. Our budget process is, is not very lengthy, so we're still in the very early stages, we usually wait to get a little more data in before we start doing any projections, but we will be working on that very quickly. That's pretty much all I have for tourism, in case, unless there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. All righty, thank you so much.
Just to make sure.
No questions.
Thank you, Allison. Moving on to item number 24, is a discussion on recognizing and implementing Juneteenth as a paid holiday for Wayne County employees and appropriate budget amendment.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to allow eight hours of paid personal observance leave for full-time employees to use at their discretion for any single day of personal significance, such as days of cultural and religious importance, to be effective as of July 1, 2023.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
And if I might, on discussion.
Yes, discussion.
If he want to go first, he can, if he has something he has to say.
This flexible time off is to align our personnel policy with personnel policies of the state of North Carolina. This will allow our employees to choose their additional day off, which may be Juneteenth, President's Day, Yon Kipper, Earth's Day, or any of the other 153 holidays or observances. I was shocked when I Googled to find out how many holidays and observances there are, and we have a very diverse employee, employees, or employees are very diverse, and so therefore this will allow the flexibility and will align with this state personnel policy. Thank you.
In simple terms, this is just a floating holiday. In simple terms, this is just a floating holiday.
Basically, and that's what state has, but the employee chooses.
What Commissioner Daughtry just stated is great information. The reason why I asked for this to be on the agenda was because it's a federal-recognized holiday, you know, and at some point, it's going throughout the states now, it's eighteen states already has adopted it as a state holiday. At some point, it will come to North Carolina, normally we are one of the last states to approve a lot of different things and be progressive in different areas, but I'm pretty sure it'll be here at some point sooner or later in the future. The city of Goldsboro has already adopted it as a paid holiday, you know, we have a military base here that observes it. I think it would be a great thing to get on board early and, you know, show that, you know, we are behind, you know, the changes that have been made in society and that we support them. As far as the other hundred and fifty holidays, I mean, you know, thank you for that information, but it doesn't have anything per se to do with this one in general. I think that, like I said, that when you're here, we recognize our military servicemen and women so often, and when they're celebrating that day, I think it's on the right that our county do the same. You know, like I said, city of Goldsboro's been progressive in deciding to take it as a paid holiday, and I thought that it would be a great gesture for us as well. I had previously put this on the agenda when Commissioner Daughtry was the chair, and he decided not to put it up there. So I knew he would have a problem with it today as well, in which you can obviously see that he did. So, you know, we celebrate July fourth. July fourth was actually really July second, but they didn't sign the documentation till July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, which is Independence. At that point in time, African-Americans, Native Americans, natives to this country weren't recognized as citizens. So that day never was recognized for them. At this point on Juneteenth, this day was recognized for them as a day of freedom in eighteen sixty-five. So that's the reason why I brought this to the attention of us, you know, if we're celebrating July fourth, why not celebrate this day as well? I, you know, I think it's an injustice to even suggest what he suggested and not recognize this day. I like the paid eight hours, yeah, that's great to choose when you want, that's something that maybe we can do at some point in the future for some other day. But this day right here has a very, very significant importance to the African-American community, Black community, Native American community, and I think it's something that we should do as a board moving forward. I was going to ask to have this put off to the next meeting, so all five, I mean, all seven of us could be here to make a decision on it, but if it's something that board wants to move forward with today, I'm perfectly fine with it either way.
We have a motion on the floor. Motion of recognition and planning Juneteenth as a paid holiday, but as a floating holiday for the employees to use as they so freely want to with appropriate budget amendment.
Do we know? Do we know about how much this is?
I think this paper was going to check on that.
Actually, I have this effective as of July one, which will be in the budget, so it'll give them time to prepare for the budget for that.
We would put it in the regular budget order.
Right, the new budget, yes.
We got a vote?
Mr. Burley, you had a question about the cause?
Yeah, we said you could put it in the things on the room.
Okay, okay.
How much is it, you know? They don't mind.
The amount for all full-time employees to give them that benefit, which includes fringes, is around a hundred eighty thousand. Now, you're not going to necessarily, you know, pay all that out, but.
Yeah, but they would be working that day regardless.
They would.
So we don't count the fringes, right? I'm just saying.
Well, what you, I think what you're really asking is like for those that get the holiday pay for working that, for like the Sheriff's Office, jail, nine-one-one, EMS, that number is sixty-four thousand.
The way that it popped up on my screen, it's like I'm voting for what I stated, but then we're actually voting on the amendment of what he stated, so therefore I can't, you know, and it wasn't seconded either, so I don't know if it needs to be seconded.
We don't have to have a second, but this was how you asked for it to be on the agenda?
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
And I will get his wording exactly and change that to be reflected in the minutes on this motion. So the motion that you are voting on right now, and I have it on in voting mode, is for the eight hours personal time, not specifically for Juneteenth as a paid holiday.
Got you.
That is the motion on the floor at this time, to begin July one.
Full-time employees.
Full-time employees only. And the motion has passed. Order one, again, what is showing on the screen is not the correct motion, that motion was changed to eight personal hours to be used any way the employee would like for full-time employees only, beginning July one, 2023.
All right, thank you for that. Moving, is there any further on that? I'll move to the county manager's report. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the fire, and I'm just proud of all of our fire departments, a great job, very professional, all of our staff, all the fire departments. Thank you for the outside agencies and their assistance. I'd also like to thank the public for their outpouring of support at the scene by the countless donations of water and food and supplies. It's heart, it touches your heart when you're there and you see these people come up just dropping off supplies and just doing anything they can do to help. And I'd like to thank the outer-county fire departments that responded as well. They gave up their weekend, you know, to come fight our fire, and I like, that counts, you know, that's just, they answered that call when we were in need, so a lot of kudos go to them. I'd also like to remind that we have the Farm Bureau luncheon here following the meeting, and we will close the meeting right after that luncheon. We'll, also on February twenty-seventh, I'd like to remind you of the Wayne County Livestock Development Association Annual Dinner at six-thirty at the Maxwell. And also on Wednesday at two o'clock, there's another sewer AIA meeting at Wayne Community College in the Walnut Building, room one oh one, the same place that took.
Give me a couple, stay with that again.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, yeah.
And it's what kind of meeting?
Two o'clock. It's the sewer study meeting that this, we're participating in, in a regionalization study, and that's for two to three-thirty.
I have a chamber board meeting.
And, yeah, it's a busy day. So also, that is all I have on for county manager's report, thank you.
All right, Commissioner's report, Mr. Daughtry.
I want to thank this board for acting on our economic development plan of building these shell buildings. We are missing out because we have no product, no buildings available. So unfortunately, we had applied for two, two million dollar grants, and that has fallen through, so it's kind of left up to us to find the financing to make this happen, and I appreciate this board taking that action today. They will be signing those contracts and construction will begin almost immediately. Economic development is important. I think we have made some errors in the past to make sure that we were reimbursed at market rate for our product. That we have now solved, and so moving forward, I think we'll have recurring dollars that we can reinvest in additional product. But anyway, thank you, and I do, before I close, I do want to say this, and that is timber, thank you so much for honoring Flowers Timber. That is a big, big theme for not only North Carolina, but for Wayne County. This was a company that was founded years ago, seventy-six, by a former commissioner, Arnold Flowers. And he handed that off to his son, who has expanded it from just a Wayne County facility, but now an international facility. So just a great honor, and we don't toot our horn, nobody else will. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. McGurk?
Yes, ma'am, I want to, again, I've kind of heartened on this, I guess, but I'm proud of our firefighters. I want y'all to kind of think about this for a minute. From about one-thirty AM on Saturday morning till about three PM, three AM on Sunday morning, they flowed over twenty-two hundred gallons a minute to try and put that fire out. And the millions of dollars of fire equipment it took to maintain that flood, that's, that is almost unheard of. And we reverted back to some of our old ways of firefighting with the drop tanks and five-inch sections and all. So that's, that's a, that's a major, that was a major fire. Those, and to say they remanufactured, rewrote ties for fuel, we saw, we saw what kind of fuel it takes, or it makes, because that was a hot fire. Also, the, okay, what Chip said just a few minutes ago about our outer-county departments, we appreciate their dedication as our statewide mutual aid allows them to come in. But, you know, we say, and they did give up their weekend, but they wouldn't have it any other way. I know that we've done the same for them over the years, and we appreciate that. Also, the sheriff of Johnston County, I pulled up, when he just, he just pulled up on the command truck today, so gracious, let us borrow it again, and I kind of went up to Sheriff Bizzle, and I shook his hand, I said, man, I appreciate you letting us borrow the truck again. I said, what is this, three or four? He said, well, it's six, but nobody's keeping count. But he was just joking, we carry on a whole lot together, and, but he said, and we agree, he said, look, but, and we do joke a lot, he said, but there's not a county line between Wayne and Johnston County when it comes to merchant services, and that says a lot. The, I also want to thank Georgie and Joe. Yesterday, I called them, trying to get us a little faster internet connection, and they come and worked on that yesterday around lunchtime, and I just want to tell them thank you, because it did work faster as far as bringing up, bringing up things.
As long as you signed in.
Exactly. And the last thing is, as Commissioner Horrison said, I will do a plug-in for our volunteer fire, fire departments. We do, we are still a strong organization, eight-hundred-and-fifty-ish strong across the county, but we'd like to get back to the twelve-hundred mark. So if you're interested in even looking at, just stop by, most of your fire departments have meetings on Monday nights, but you can go to the Wayne County Firefighter Association website and click on the QR code and put your address in, and they'll tell you exactly where your at, your fire department is, the address and the days or nights that they train. So I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner McGurk, is there any age limit on volunteers?
Sixteen is junior, sixteen to eighteen is junior, and from eighteen to ninety.
Okay.
So there's no, you know, so, and the thing about it is, is after you get twenty years of service in, credible service as in you're maintaining your hours of training, you are eligible, if you pay into the retirement system, you are eligible to retire at fifty-five, which I get my check this year. But you don't have to retire to keep, to get your check, so that's even, it's even a better thing, so, thanks, sir.
Commissioner Foster?
No comment.
Mr. Horrison?
Yes, I asked Cissy Lee Elmore to make a presentation with Watch today. She made a very brief presentation, but I just want to point out some things that happened here. With the Watch program, you can get an appointment within two to three days, which I find amazing with doctors' appointments these days, how long it does take. Over the years, they've seen one hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four patients. That number, like she said, will go up to two thousand, two hundred thousand this year, another amazing statistic. But what really is amazing is the number of thirty-day prescriptions. They've issued seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one prescriptions with a value, retail value of five million, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and three hundred and eighteen. I mean, that's amazing.
That is amazing.
And that pharmacy has only been open, I think, for about maybe a year or so, so now.
Where's it located?
Over at the hospital, behind the hospital at the Watch. Yeah, so they're doing outstanding service to the community I don't think is really being, being recognized there.
I was not aware that this was going on.
Exactly. And Commissioner McGurk, you'd be impressed with the, with the truck they have now?
Oh, yeah, it was, I remember the older one.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
I bet I know how to help him with that, with that drill.
But, I'll just say one thing here, we have a lot of agencies here in Wayne County that go unnoticed. Our citizens in need know where they are and where to go to, but they go unnoticed, and I think we need to recognize some of these things that are going on.
Need to figure it out more front.
Exactly, exactly.
Do they have an existing route of Watch?
Yes, they do. They have, have different routes, you can go on their website and see where they're going to be located.
So that's, that website is Watch.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So, again, they're doing a fantastic service, and I just want to make sure they're fully recognized.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
I have no comments, so we can recess to the Maxwell Center for the Farm Bureau Luncheon.